All right. Good evening, everyone. This is January twenty eighth, special call meeting. I'll call this meeting to order tonight. I think Ms. Harmon is going to lead us in pledge and invocation.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you for my neighbors who are in attendance tonight, for those that are tuning in online as well. Be with us as we make this decision for the betterment of our town. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right, we all have the agenda. It's not a very long one. Are there any amendments? And if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
Make a motion that we approve the agenda.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. It's approved. All right, new business number one. Lee, it says you're gonna introduce it to us.
Hope everyone's doing well tonight. Due to the resignation of Commissioner Strickland, the board approved the process of filling the Ward Two vacancy by holding interviews on January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, at a special called meeting. There was an optional application posted on the town website, but the only requirement to apply slash be nominated to serve is to reside in Ward Two. If nominated and approved by the board, the selected candidate will serve as interim Ward Two Commissioner until November twenty twenty five election.
All right. Thank you, Lee. I'm gonna start with a couple of words, and then if you guys have any, and then we'll get started. This is kind of a unique evening. Due to a Commissioner resignation, the board may appoint a new Commissioner tonight to serve for Ward Two until one could be elected later this year to fulfill the then two-year remainder for that seat. Typically Commissioners are elected by the people and not appointed by other elected officials, but there are many benefits to having a full board so we can get as much input as we can on the decisions we're faced with. Certainly, it is not for any of us up here tonight to say whose credentials or experience make them fit to serve. The nature of this position doesn't require credentials or certain experience because the Board of Commissioners acts as the voice of the people, setting the vision for Andrew and making decisions on what direction to take the town. With that in mind, I would encourage the sitting Commissioners to make their decisions based on who the people of Andrew would want to represent them. The people had chosen Ashley Strickland, and personally, I would strive to find a temporary replacement for her that would best fit what Ms. Strickland ran on, stood for, and endeavored towards. In her own words during the campaign, she expressed concern that there's a gap between elected officials and town residents. We can't ask for community involvement, but pick and choose who gets a seat at the table. Asking for and including ideas and perspectives for all of our residents isn't just smart, it's the right thing to do. People need to be able to trust that transparency and honesty aren't just words we use to sound nice, but rather they're actions, actions that can rebuild and instill the true meaning of community. A good leader knows it isn't about the role, it's about the goal. Those are powerful words. Then. Now, it is not for us to appoint someone we think would agree with us on this board or make decisions to support our vision. It is our charge to appoint someone to represent the people of the town, an independent thinker. We shouldn't always agree on this board, and that's how democracy is supposed to work. Tonight, I am aware of three brave souls who have volunteered to serve their town as Ward Two Commissioner until the elections later this year, two of whom made the same decision in the last election, twenty twenty-three. The other currently serves on our Community Development Board. I'm proud of these folks for stepping up, and I very much appreciate their willingness to serve. Any of you guys have any words before we start interviews? All right, so we had three applicants, and an application was not required. Really, there's not much required for us to consider them. We'll do interviews, and again, an interview is not required. You're not required to answer the questions in the interview, you're not required to do anything, but just say you're willing to do it, to be considered. What order do you guys want to go in? Mr. Prasad applied first. So do you want to step up here? Tell us a little bit about yourself, and then we might have some questions.
Got it. My name is Nigel Prasad. I've been living Ward Two for about a year and a half. Have strong experience in financial management and project execution. I applied to the position because I just really wanted to be a part of Andrew's growth and help move it towards a direction of to be more inclusive. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous.
You're fine.
The fact that you're standing there, you're in good shape.
Yeah, I've been a, you know, I just love public service. I've been a public servant since I was eighteen or nineteen. Done things in the past such as raise disaster relief funds for my hometown county when a tornado struck back in twenty twenty. We raised about two thousand dollars to give directly back to the affected families. In Durham, when I was a freshman or sophomore at North Carolina Central University, we routinely provided warm meals and blankets to the homeless in the wintertime. And in the summertime, we'll just make sandwiches and just pass them out. Yeah, it's a lot, but what questions do you guys have?
I have all the hard ones, and I wrote them down so I wouldn't forget it.
It's fine.
All right, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
In your own words, sir, what is your vision for Andrew?
My vision for Andrew is, again, to just help move things forward in a more positive direction as, you know, we have a, I believe Andrew has a lot of potential. I think my first experience of Andrew, I, you know, GPS sent me to the DMV to renew my registration, and I had a very positive first experience. I was just walking across the street, and someone just, it was very vibrant, just welcomed me. I was like, all right, my wife and I decided to look for homes here. But my vision is to really, I want the board and the town, I want to build that gap between the board and the town. And I have two solid ideas that I would like to share. The first being an online and physical kind of like suggestion box so that we can just clear the disconnect between the town, the citizens, and the board by them submitting ideas that they would like to see implemented. And however we can, we review it and say, this is a good thing we can do. And second, to promote economics in the town, is to really start a kind of like a small business incubator. I did some work with Durham Soup back when I was in college. We was able to work with local soup shops and provide soup and bread and invite the town. People came, we took money at the door. Local entrepreneurs pitched an idea, and we were able to give that money that we raised at the door to the winning entrepreneur. And those are just some things that I would like to see in town.
All right, the next one I wrote is, what do you think is the most important issue that Andrew faces right now?
I think the most important issue is the gap, the disconnect between the town and the board, like what Ms. Strickland mentioned in her campaign. And, you know, if we're not listening to the citizens, there's really no purpose of a board. Even no matter how small things may seem to us, it could be a much larger issue for someone else.
Well, that's what I have. This position does require some time commitment, not only for the meetings themselves, but things like familiarizing yourself with the agenda material. Sometimes that's hundreds of pages sometime. And we get it typically on Friday, the Friday before a meeting. So, you know, it's an expectation of all of us and whoever else does it to at least familiarize yourself with that material, to come prepared. So it takes some time, not a lot of time, it's not a full-time job, but some time.
Yes, it is.
Are you willing?
Yes, it is.
It doesn't pay like one, but anyway, are you willing to commit your time for this?
Yeah, I'm super willing to commit my time. I'm an avid reader. My wife likes to get on me because I read my emails more than anything else. So I will look forward to, you know, hopefully reading those, reading whatever I need to read. And you made a strong point, like I know, you know, you guys don't get compensated much, but I don't think that's important in this job. It's, I'm a public servant. I just want to serve this town and help move it towards, you know, whatever the town wants it to be. And yeah, I'm ready to commit, and you guys will have me.
Yeah, I could promise you that none of us sit up here for the money. That's what I had, guys. I don't know.
You pretty much answered my question.
Sorry.
You're good.
Anybody else?
Can you tell us any civic organizations that you've been a part of and what you've done with other civic organizations, besides soup kitchen and all that?
Yep, yep. So Durham Soup was an example. I helped start an organization called Level the Playing Field to provide opportunities to students that wouldn't normally receive them at HBCUs. We, I think, would just stop doing a lot of the work this year. Another example is Bertie Strong, where, again, we helped raise that two thousand dollars in August of twenty twenty. Another thing we did with Bertie Strong was we was able to pass out school supplies for the twenty twenty-one school year. So it's just a big thing we wanted to do after I graduated college. That's a lot, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. Is that something that you would like to bring to Andrew and their head?
Yes, I have a million of ideas. A lot of it, you know, I filter it through the CDAB, the Community Development Advisory Board. You know, it's, there's an opportunity to kind of sit at that chair, and I would like to share my ideas with you guys.
Is there anything that you're doing on the Community Development Board that really spikes your interest, that you really are passionate about?
I think the big thing was the work we're doing with the Association for the Advancement of Andrew. If you guys aren't aware of it, it's, we will be pushing out information pretty soon. You know, it's, we have some challenges right now, but I think last meeting was a pretty productive meeting, and we have a clear path forward. But I think if, in a perfect world, I would like to serve as a liaison from the board to the AAA. And I think, you know, that can solve a lot of the concerns we're having. But that's, that's pretty much, that's pretty much it.
I know, thank you.
Service is why I ran. Service is why I'm here, so I can appreciate that. I think you're a valuable asset to community development. I appreciate your ambition, your ideas, your excitement. Sometimes that gets lost, and so I really value that. I don't want anything about what happens tonight to diminish that value, and I hope that you continue to give because you have a lot. And I just, I want to just acknowledge that willingness because it's not in everybody's, it's not on everybody's priority list, so.
Thank you. Questions for you, Mr. Jim?
He covers everything, I tell you what.
Well, thank you for coming up the interview.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right, Mr. Crisp, you're here with us tonight. He went through it first, so now you know how it's gonna go. It's not so bad.
That's not my favorite thing. Thank you all for allowing me to be here tonight. Thank you to you guys, the Commissioners, the Town of Andrew, the citizens. I've been a twenty-eight-year resident of Andrew since today, in nineteen ninety-seven, is the day I moved into my home down on MacIver Street. Chose this town because it was a nice, safe, little community that looked like it had a lot to offer. So along the way, as I was here, I volunteered, served on the Andrew Chamber of Commerce for three years. I was the president of the Chamber of Commerce. My name's on the clock over there. We did a lot of stuff then, spent a lot of time. It was mostly service of the who would volunteer to do the work. And we were there, I was there with some of you that are sitting in this room now. As far as service to the community, one of the biggest things that I feel is important is to support the town functions, the crepe myrtles, the things that go on here in town, the motorcycle rallies, the car shows and stuff like that, by patronizing, also by buying and supporting the local businesses. I think that's very, very important. Being a salesperson, I'm not in town all the time, but I am in town every night. I don't travel for work overnight, but I do travel from Pittsboro to Newton Grove and Knightdale to Spring Hope.
That's not too bad.
It's a, it's a big square, so I see a lot of people, talk to a lot of people every day. As far as time commitment, I worked for a company that allowed me a couple of weeks to learn a product line of about forty thousand products. It was a little pushed, but, you know, we did what we had to do, and I have to go out every day and start brand new. And it's like finals week every time you meet a new customer. And that's what you have to do. You have to be prepared. And you take the time to be prepared. And it depends on what you're interested in in order to do that, and I think with the Town of Andrew, I would be very interested. It is my home. I want it to be safe. I want it to be an honest community. I want to use, and one thing I would promise to everybody in the town, on the board, and the community is I would always use common sense. I would use honesty. Those things have gotten me a long way in life, and I don't have any regrets for any of my decisions I've made throughout my life because I've used those things. Pray every day. Thank God every morning when I wake up. I may be hurting every morning, but I still know that that's one of the reasons I wake up. And that's, that's me in a nutshell. Thirty years, almost thirty years here, almost half my life. My parents never lived in a home for more than thirty weeks in my childhood. And I didn't want to do that when I was an adult, and so I've made it a point to make it possible to stay in a place that I liked. I chose Andrew, and I've been here ever since.
Sure, you've seen a lot of change in twenty-eight years.
Absolutely, absolutely. A lot of change, but then a lot of stuff has stayed the same.
Yeah.
That's one of the reasons why I'm still here.
Yeah. And I can appreciate your, what you do for work and memorizing all that. I get your company's catalogs, and I don't even know everything that's in there.
We don't either.
All right, so I'm just gonna ask you the first two because you've answered the time commitment one. In your own words, what is your vision for Andrew?
Smart growth. The Town of Andrew is growing regardless of whether we want it to grow or what our vision is, it's going to grow. We've got to go grow smart. We've got to use common sense. I think that's our biggest challenge, but it's also our biggest fortune that we have in Andrew, that people want to come here. But we've got to make it, we've got to continue to make it a town where people want to be. That's my vision.
Well, safe to assume then that's the most important issue that Andrew faces, in your opinion?
Absolutely.
Well, that's what I had, guys. Any other questions?
Is there any other issue that, being on the board, that you would like to address, not just the growth, but what is some other issues that you're passionate about?
When I ran for Andrew, as a candidate, one of the reasons I got involved as a candidate and to potentially become a leader is because I was asked by a person that I highly respect. I was asked multiple times to represent them. And I felt as though if someone is going to ask me to serve them that many times, then I should do that. So when I ran, I think everybody recognized that I was very supportive of the Town of Andrew, had honest, fundamental growth ideas, had, how do I say it? I want to, I want to see honesty and integrity in all levels, not just the business world, not just the, I want to see the streets safe. Chief makes that possible every day. I see his people working hard. I feel like I have a night guard at my house because of where I live. They take good care of us. I want to keep that, and we need to make the town a place where people want to be. And I want to make sure that that stays, continues that way.
Thanks for a lot of mine. Thank you.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right, we had one other person express interest before tonight, and that was Alexa Whittington. She also ran in the twenty twenty-three election, as did Mr. Crisp. Unfortunately, she had a pre-scheduled trip that she could not get out of, so she's not joining us here tonight. That doesn't disqualify her, so that is someone for us to consider as well. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to be considered for this position? The only thing you have to do is live in Ward Two. And have a pulse. I'm just kidding.
Pretty much.
All right, I said it earlier, you guys are, you guys are very brave for, you know, submitting yourself for this. Like Ms. Harmon mentioned earlier, you know, only one will get appointed, and a couple of people have expressed explicit interest in it. I would send the same message that she did, which is, if it doesn't happen tonight, don't be discouraged. We need people in this town who are willing to serve and give and be invested, whether that's on advisory boards or this seat will be open again for filings in the summer, for an election in November. That's not that far away. So if you're not appointed, and you still feel like that your heart is for this, I would encourage you to run for the November election. Do you guys have anything you'd like to add?
No, I just think whoever runs for this position, they have to more or less be thick-skinned because you'll be criticized for stuff that people don't understand. And, you know, we've all been criticized one way or another for decisions we have to make. We don't like it, but we have to do it. And there's reasons why we have to do it that we cannot divulge because it's law. So just to keep that in the back of your mind.
You guys still want to be considered after that? Last chance to walk out.
The doors are locked. Run.
Do you have anything you want to add?
No, just stay involved. The community needs a lot of people to stay involved and make sure that this, Andrew's a diamond in the rough. That's how I feel about it, and we need everybody's input in order to get us near the goal.
Ms. Harmon, anything?
There are several things. But we're all here because we choose to be here. We make a choice on Tuesdays, we make a choice with our emails, we make a choice answering the phone, you know, to be committed to where we love. So it's important, it's important to not only be in this room where you're sitting. I've sat there many times, one or two of us in the room. It's fun to be interested when things are a little bit wiry and there's maybe some juicy news. It's another thing to want to be here when it's not fun, it's not exciting, it's nothing to go home and brag about, but you're having to make decisions, small, big, everything in between, that affect not tomorrow, but in several years. And sometimes you plant seeds that you don't get to sit under the tree, you know, and I know that's maybe a corny way to describe that, but it's true. The wheel of government turns slow, and so we came on this board, the three of us that were elected previously, ambitious and excited and looking forward. But sometimes you get the brakes pumped real quick just as a reality check to say, you know, while what you have to offer is good, not yet. So I'm thankful that three people are willing to put their name in the hat again for this. And I hope we continue to see all your lovely faces at all of our regularly scheduled board meetings because it takes all of us. I'll get off my soapbox now.
That's all right. It's your soapbox to have.
Dan, when, if they are, the elections for the spot, when would they take office? That fall, January or after the election?
I believe they'd be sworn in the same way any board member would be sworn in following the election, probably in December.
December.
So this sort of seat will be, you know, you'll fill this seat until that person is sworn in.
Okay. That's my understanding. There's a couple of different voting methods for something like this, but the recommended one is that I ask each of you the person you would like to be, and if we have a majority, that's it, rather than nominate and vote yea or nay. There's several reasons it's recommended, and as long as you guys aren't opposed to that method, we can just proceed like that. All right. I'm gonna start with you, Jim. You're all the way on my left. Jim, who would you like to see fill this seat?
We've got really two good candidates. It's gonna be tough. I'm gonna have to nominate Stephen Crisp.
All right. Ms. Harmon?
I, Nigel, your commitment is important to me. You are a valuable asset on community development, and I don't want that, I don't want that to be taken. I think that you have something to offer there, and it's really important. And the time commitment is questionable for me, not just from one candidate, but from both candidates. If I had been made aware of how much time I was gonna have to commit to this during the middle of the day at inconvenient times, I just, I'm concerned. I don't know that either, I know that you wouldn't be here unless you thought that those time commitments were possible for you. I am also going to select Steve Crisp.
All right, Ms. Holly? All right. For those who weren't selected, please don't be discouraged. We very much appreciate it. Mr. Crisp, you have been selected to fill the seat in the interim. As of right now, my understanding is that you would be sworn in at the February fourth meeting, although there are some other things happening where we might need a special call meeting, and we might possibly be able to have you sworn in at the beginning of that so we can have you involved in it. Not exactly sure yet, but we'll be in touch with you and have you sworn in just as soon as possible so you can take part in all of the glory that is the Board of Commissioners. All right. That's all we had, so I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. We are adjourned. Thank you, guys.